It's seven o'clock. I call the order, the March eighth, twenty twenty-two, Prairie Township Board of Trustees Meeting.
Trustee Hartshorn?
Yes.
Trustee Mears?
Yes.
Trustee Music?
Yes.
Please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the pride of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we're gonna start off. Let's, Harry?
Hi.
Before we do that, I'd like to do one thing real quick.
Sure.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion real quick, repealing resolution twenty-two oh three regarding masks in the township buildings, based off updated CDC recommendations in Montgomery County being considered a COVID community level score of low. That recommends wearing a mask based on personal preference informed by your personal level risk. Put a second to that.
Yes.
Trustee Mears?
Yes.
Trustee Music?
Yes.
Trustee Hartshorn?
No. All right, Ms. Harry?
Hi.
Yes.
Okay, so I'm Mindy Harry from Kramer and Associates. So we usually annually submit an OPWC application for a project and right now, the current project we're working on is Providence Pike and.
You're a server, yes?
I am on the server.
All right about that.
That's okay. And so you had asked me to come to the meeting to sort of go over the whole process from maybe beginning to end since all of you are pretty fresh with this stuff, so. Will you pass it around? I went ahead and did a spreadsheet of the financials for this project and here around August, we submit applications to OPWC for the township. The applications go through a care scoring process through the rest of that year and then in November they score them and they slate and generally the township projects get kicked to small government, which is now what we're in that process we're now in there. OPWC is a little behind on their submit their notifications, but we just received notice, I think, March second. We have till the end of the month to cure this existing application that was submitted last August through the small government program. So our goal is to rescore it. We have to use the small government methodology to score the application to try to tweak it, make it a little bit more competitive within the program. So the spreadsheet that I created for you guys, it basically do the estimated local funds, which would include your guys' in-kind and local match. And the highlighted portion is the percentage that you guys are contributing toward this application right now, which is sixteen percent. And so right now you guys are getting two points for this portion of the application. The methodology for small government is pretty much boilerplate. So there's not really much you can change in an application once it gets to this point other than requesting less grant funds and increasing your local match. So this spreadsheet down, it just shows you if you bump it up to the next tier of right now, you guys are currently at sixteen percent. And then if you under the estimated overall total local resources column, down to the next tier, it's twenty-one percent, you'll get three points, twenty-six, four points, thirty-one percent, five points. So it gives you guys an idea. I have the totals to the right of that showing how much you guys would actually need to kick in total in order to get one more point or a couple more points. So that's sort of where we're at right now and I think it's just up to you guys as a board to decide if you want to leave the application as it is. And then we'll just submit it. I already got the certificate of estimated resources from charity. And I think that's probably all I have. Everything else was submitted in the original application. And I just need an indication from you guys on whether you guys are going to increase your guys' contributions. So I would need a new local share letter certifying to the new amounts and then a new resolution.
Need that by March thirty-first.
I would need that by March thirty-first.
Then, so yeah. Get it.
And by March. Sometimes I'm working right up to the minute on on that stuff because some communities can't get them to us until, you know, right then. So just as soon as you guys can get it to me, it would need to be before then though. And then I would take care of submitting everything up to the state so that way they have it so they can score it and then we should find out maybe around May or June if it's, you know, successful. So the one thing I can tell you is the program is extremely competitive. So it may not seem like what will kick up our in-kind and cash to another twenty or thirty thousand dollars just to get one point, but one point can make or break, you know, your scoring on an application. So it does make a difference.
We're second in our area.
Yeah, well, there was five that the District Four had recommended for small government and they ranked Perry Townships as number two. So you get points based on where you're ranked also. And so being two, you got more points than the other three below you. So it's an extremely competitive program and once it gets kicked to small government, statewide. So it's every county that gets to take five of their projects to this program. Small cities. So it's just depends on whether you wanna leave it or, you know, try to make it, you know, where it's more competitive. And then if not, and if it's not successful, then what we do is we just sort of, it's like a cycle. We resubmit it again in August and then we go through that whole infrastructure application process and then it goes through that scoring and then gets kicked to small government again. So we always try to tweak the application so that way it's, you know, something that has a chance. Because if you're not making changes to an application, then everybody else is.
Looking at the chart here, so my understanding, like if we went like to the next level, we would be increasing our and funds contribution about thirteen hundred dollars and then our in-kind was like about twenty thousand. Is that correct?
Yeah, and it can be, those numbers can be flip-flopped.
Okay.
So it just depends on how much your guys' your road superintendent, how much work, like what is he capable of doing when he's out there? Can he handle more in-kind versus and and OPWC looks at the pot of money and in-kind as one. So it's your overall in-kind contribute or your local match, which includes your funds and your in-kind. So you can choose to kick in twenty-five thousand dollars more in kind, which would lower the grant request because you're going to be doing more work that the contractor would essentially be doing. Or you can just kick in more cash. So the in-kind really just spaces is based off of their capabilities.
And will Mr. Hoops be able to see that before?
What what I would.
What needs to be done before we can tell you that?
Yeah, I mean, I had given her an application back in August. I mailed a copy of it, which I can scan and email to you guys again, and it has the original cost estimate in it, which then shows all the in-kind that you're responsible for, for that project.
Currently where we're sitting for that.
Yeah, and then you can choose, you can basically look up in the contractors portion of it and say, you know, I could do that. And then our our engineer can move it down. Mike Tackett would be working on the cost estimate so he could do that down into the in-kind and play with the numbers and see what you want to do. But this just gives you kind of an idea of your total over on the far right, last two columns, the sixteen percent. That gives you sort of the roundabout if you can come up with a combination of your in-kind and cash. Right now, your combination of in-kind and cash is the sixteen percent, which is sixty-seven thousand, sixty-sixty-six. So that's how you would work it. And we can, you know, I can have Mike, you know, I'll get you the cost estimate, but anything that you need to talk with Mike about, he's pretty good about the in-kind and knowing what you guys generally can and can't handle anyway. So.
Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Appreciate your time.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to the consent agenda. We have the acceptance of the following minutes, February eighth, twenty twenty-two, for the regular Board of Trustees Meeting. February twenty-first, twenty twenty-two, Board of Trustees Work Session, February twenty-one, twenty twenty-two, Special Board of Trustees Meeting, the approval of bills being paid for January first, twenty twenty-two to February twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-two. Electric warrant, electronic warrants, one dash two zero two two, two seven eight dash two zero two two. And February first, twenty twenty-two, February twenty-eight, twenty twenty-two, check numbers thirty-six, eight fifty-two to thirty-six, nine thirty-one. The approval of blanket certificates and purchase orders issued between January first, twenty twenty-two and February twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-two. Blanket certificates, one dash two zero two two through one oh six dash two zero two.
Should be.
It should be two-two, okay. And purchase order, one dash two zero two two through eighteen dash two zero two two. I'll make a motion to accept the consent agenda.
Second.
Trustee Mears?
Yes.
Trustee Hartshorn?
Yes.
Trustee Music?
Yes.
Fiscal Officer Grohl's report.
Hey. Just not really much to report on the Opers. I'm still waiting to hear back from Social Security whether they're going to reimburse us. What was paid to them in error that should have gone to Opers. I'm still waiting to hear on that one. They said, you know, it is the IRS and stuff, so it could be a while before we hear anything coming back through them. The twenty twenty-one year has been closed in the UAN. Twenty twenty-one, find the annual financial reports are completed and available for review by appointment. The ad has been submitted to AIM Media Midwest and will be published in the March ninth paper. I presented or sent to the trustees, Resolutions twenty-two forty-one and Resolution twenty-two fifteen that cover the January and February supplemental and reallocation of appropriations that I would need to have the trustees vote on that for me. You guys want to do that or do you want me to finish through my report first?
I'll finish your report.
Okay. We also have a couple of medical bills. Everybody's aware that Chief Littleton was involved in a situation in Inglewood back on January the sixteenth. We have received a couple of bills, one from Miami Valley Hospital in the amount of one thousand eleven dollars and another one for a psychiatric evaluation for in the amount of four hundred and five dollars. Chief Littleton found out at the time that the company used to come in and do what he had had done at Miami Valley Hospital, went to contracts. We didn't know that, so we didn't enter into a contract with them. That's why he had to go to Miami Valley Hospital. These are expenses that's not covered under Bureau of Workman's compensation because he wasn't injured in the event as well as we don't have anything currently set up to pay those types of expenses because they're not a contracted service. Whereas if he, we were set up with the other company to contracted to come in and do the testing, then we could pay it through contracted services. So I have to ask you guys, do we want to just pay this expense from another line item like miscellaneous expenses through the police department for now? Or we have the option to set up a new account code and appropriate appropriations and therefore instances like this? However, Police Chief Littleton did let me know that he has contacted the company and we are now in a verbal contract with them to where if we have future instances that they'll be paid under a contracted service.
I don't see a problem with entering into a into an agreement for those services.
What is the cost of that service?
There is no cost.
No.
It's a per event.
It's per event. So I just had to give them a verbal that if we use them, we promise to pay. Apparently they had issues with other municipalities that just would not pay the bill. And what this company does is they'll come to you, whether if it's here or at the hospital, and administer a drug test. I think that drug test, I'd have to go back and look from two thousand and eighteen from accidents and stuff. I think we're only talking like a hundred and fifty bucks or or so for that.
Just to be clear, these are, these are something that would happen on any incidents.
Yes.
Instance of something like that.
Yes.
Protocol.
Yep.
Yep.
I don't have a problem with it.
So the biggest question I have is do we want to just pay it out of a miscellaneous expense through the police department? Since we've got something in place for future events? Or does the trustees want to set up an account code and set specific appropriations aside? Now, when we put those aside and they have, they can only be spent on those expenses.
What's your feelings?
The miscellaneous is already there. It would save a lot of headache, I think, I think. So I think just using the miscellaneous would be appropriate.
Good with that. Hope we don't have to dig into.
Right. So did you make a motion to that?
No, I just, when I talked with Assistant Prosecutor Sharma, she just said I had to talk with you guys. If we wanted to set up a separate account code with appropriations, then we would have to have a resolution. If we're paying it out of an existing one, then we're fine.
Okay. And do we need a motion to enter into that into that contract, that verbal contract?
No, because there's no cost to it. It's like, it's like, if it was something we had to pay for, then we would have to.
And none of that's covered retroactively. It's worth asking.
I went through three different supervisors trying to get them to make the exception on a weekend and they would not do it. So.
And then just the other other thing I have is I do have a couple of things coming up. Friday, I am meeting with Mr. Hoops. We're going to sit down and go over the twenty twenty budget to establish permanent appropriations.
And I will be there.
You're gonna be there for that one. And then on the twenty-fifth, OTA is hosting a roundtable best practices for fiscal officers and I'm going to be attending virtually for that. And then all we have then is just the two resolutions that were provided to the trustees.
And those were provided. So was there any questions on the resolutions that were provided? What were those numbers again? It was twenty-two fifteen?
Twenty-two fourteen is the January supplemental and reallocation of appropriations and twenty-two fifteen is the February.
So one was January.
Yes, typically we would have already done that, but we had to, I had to get year-end closed out before it would let me do anything with January and February.
Okay, well, I will make a motion. A separate one for each resolution.
Yes.
Okay. Make a motion to accept Resolution twenty-two fourteen for the January twenty twenty-two appropriations is written.
I'll second that.
Trustee Music?
Yes.
Trustee Hartshorn?
Yes.
Trustee Mears?
Yes.
I will make a motion to accept Resolution twenty-two fifteen for the February twenty twenty-two appropriations is written.
Second that as well.
Trustee Music?
Yes.
Trustee Hartshorn?
Yes.
Trustee Mears? All right, that's all of my report.
Rhodes and Cemetery Report. Our cemetery, we had two burials last month, one in Pyramid and one in Pleasant Hill. The cremation remains that I had in my office were properly buried on February eleventh at Pyramid Cemetery. We got our cemetery rule signs and we got them installed in our three active cemeteries. I've got two quotes back on the archway, tearing that down. The trustees have the copy of that. We completed our March first cleanup of the graves. I want to give a big thank you to Dave Steffi for allowing us to use this player surrender to let all the flowers and decorations into. It was a big help to us to use it. Like to also save a date for April thirtieth at two PM, Lutheran Church. The Daughters of the American Revolution are honoring Sebastian Heger. He was a Revolutionary War Patriot. We'll be placing a plaque marker on the site. And I just wanted to let everyone know about that special event coming up. I also have some papers for that. Still trying to find a dump truck that fits our budget and needs. Have a couple feelers out to just see if we could look into trucks that they're getting rid of. Our building, we have been tearing out all routed parts of the office. I've reached out to a few electricians in our area about getting a generator plug installed for our shop. I'm waiting to receive quotes. I was informed the board approved money for the maintenance building. I was just wanting to get exactly what was set aside and what exactly are we wanting to spend our money on in the maintenance building. Rhodes heard back from the ODOT grant just this week and we did not make the cut for any of the funding on Amity Road. Been on snow and ice, high water, sometimes both the same day. We've been cutting trees back along the roadway. We've been locating tile and trying to get our high water situations to a minimum. Been dealing with soil and water and accounting to get some maps for our tile locations, just plaits, blocks and different ideas on where they're going. I cleaned up a few dump truck loads of corn and bean fodder from the falling of ice in the big rains we've had the last two weeks. We got a lot more to do from the one yesterday. The update on Wolf Creek watershed is FEMA has re-solicited bids.
For cemeteries, can you? First off, is are the cemetery rules, are they, the new update rules posted on the on the website?
Yeah, those have been there. That's where they got them for.
That's okay.
On the side.
Yeah. So um can you kind of just give an idea of what you do on March first, October first? I mean, as far as, you know, we're going in, we're removing everything that's there previously. So so every grave is going to be cleaned off if it's not on the headstone.
Correct.
Okay.
If it's outside the headstone, off the foundation, there's, if you walk through our cemeteries, they're better now. But in October, when we, when I first did my first clean off, we had this huge concrete bases of flower planters that are some in the middle, some on the side. There's taken off the side. They got landscape blocks. We have bricks, we have shrubs. We had just any and everything, not on the headstones and not in our rows or on the, you know, off the grass, basically to mow. October first from March first through the winter, people like to put out wreaths, different things, decorations, and that's okay because we're not mowing. It's just then come around March first, we will clean all that stuff up that doesn't get picked up. You know, people will come in and and set flowers down and those flowers don't get picked up. They just, they blow around. This is, this is cleaning of the cemeteries.
And to be clear, everything needs to be on the headstone if we're going to have a decoration.
Yes.
The foundation.
Or the foundation. Nothing on the grass area around.
Correct.
Okay, correct.
Your question regarding the building, I'm pretty sure the quote that you put in for redoing that back area was like ninety-one hundred dollars or something similar to that.
Yeah.
That was approved.
Right.
So we did approve that for you to redo that back area.
We were gonna see though if he could see about the pricing to do metal versus the wood. Because somebody said that they had here recently because of the cost of everything, that metals actually can sometimes get cheaper and it'll last longer.
Sure.
Especially if you get a leak or.
That was something through Job Corps. Their union carpenters. So they are going to price that as well. Hopefully we can get them, they'll, they'll come in for free and build it all for free. So that's what we're working on. I'm trying to get that ball rolling.
And will we take a part of that money and donate it to Job Corps? Then, I mean, they're, they would do it for free.
We have to pay for the material.
Yeah, we are, that's material.
Yes.
But I'm saying would there be a I don't think there's any.
He changes hands at all?
Okay. I would, according to.
I don't know what legally we could do.
That's kind of like CTC. When they do it, they bring the kids out, they build it, you don't give them any money.
We.
Now, if you want to make a donation to the program or the school, that was fun, but.
So just kind of where we're at with them, I just needed to get that clarification for them. They're also going to work on getting a quote for material for metal studs, everything. So that would be us.
Good, yes.
So the estimates lower than I thought they'd be?
They are time and material.
Time of year and what they have going on or is that?
That's just time and material. That's what they think they'll have in it. Now, if they get into something that is like extraordinary, they have torque, they have all the stuff they need. But if it was an extraordinary situation, that's going to call for, hey, we, we can't do that today. We can't got, we can't get that accomplished. And that would be something to take up. But we're both really in the ballgame at the exact same price. Obviously, I mean, they talk to each other, so they're.
Right.
I also had called Mike Manzant in town to get a quote, but I had not heard anything back. So I kind of was waiting on him to get something, but I hadn't got.
Do you want to wait on?
I don't. I mean, this is, these are all guys that are in our township. So.
Want to move quickly on this, especially before these guys get busy, if this is something they can do soon?
And here, here's the thing, is that we definitely want to get it before the weather gets any worse. Because we keep getting rain and winds and rain and winds. It's going to come down.
I'd rather deal with it safely.
It was bad today. There was debris everywhere, wasn't there?
Yeah.
Yeah.
It was dripping from yesterday. This is dripping water out of it yesterday. Go about awarding who's who or what.
Do you have a preference?
I, I mean, I don't have a particular preference. Both guys are good guys. I mean, Ben with Alliance has called through snowstorms and volunteer, you would like to volunteer, it's time to snow. If I was to need a break, we would need a break. I'm not talked about that with Kelly and offered that, but Ben has offered his services more than, more than once.
And he was, I have to give Mr. Aitman credit because when the tornado came through, he was the first one out there with us and he worked nonstop.
Kelly Brown did a little, I mean, not taking anything. It's just, I probably have a little, I mean, Ben has stopped at me on Thornapple. He lives on Thornapple.
Yes.
Just questions that I had about some tile or why I was doing what I was doing and and he, he come out and walked with us and give his two cents and what he thought was going on as well. I don't know. I mean, they're both very, very, very competitive. So.
You're only talking twenty-five dollar difference.
Right. Basically from our last round of doing bids and whatnot, it's, it's basically what we want to choose, right? There's, so I don't have a problem with Alliance doing the work. So I'll make a motion to accept the bid from Alliance subject and excreting for the removal of the archway at Pleasant Hill Cemetery.
Trustee Mears?
Yes.
Trustee Hartshorn?
Yes.
Trustee Music?
Yes.
Let's say they come across something that's just out there. Just, I don't know, you know.
Right.
Do you want me to call and let you guys know as we're out there? I mean, we're gonna.
I mean, if there's a work with.
There's something that's going to incur an elevation in cost, most definitely.
Sure.
Then I would also expect you to have your gloves in your truck out there. I'm not opposed to working ever.
No, right.
I mean, I, I told Ben and Kelly that I would work with them if we need to stop traffic.
Right.
When it comes down.
What those bids on the work were based on nothing extraordinary happening.
Right.
So yes, if something extraordinary happens, let the trustees know. And we'll deal with it if it arises.
When you were looking at it, is there, and I don't know if you went into detail, is there any way that we can save the top, any, can we save any of it? Do we know?
If we, if they were to get a truck in there to get themselves on a lift.
Okay.
But what's the risk for that?
Yeah, no.
Yeah, price goes up probably. I mean.
Yeah.
It does not.
I know what that top part, I know that columns and everything are falling.
They said they would do the best they could do saving that.
If we, if there's anything that we could possibly save that we could, because I would, I personally would kind of like to put like some on the side or something, just save it. And I know there's a plaque on inside that thing. I would like to save that.
And I, I mean, I can, I can take the plaque out, obviously.
Yes, yeah.
I'm going to do as much as I possibly can before they come in to do it.
And I'll tell you right now, you, you will come upon a situation.
I'm sure.
How that goes.
How it is here. Everything's a situation. But yeah, so. Glad we got that.
Good.
And when, do you have any idea when he's going to start?
I, I would call him tomorrow.
Okay, yeah.
But yeah.
Okay.
He's excavation work, so it's wet. Things aren't super busy.
Would probably be welcome at this time.
Yes.
So that's.
He'll, he'll welcome this, I'm sure. And I, I will talk to him tomorrow and I'll let you guys know when he can work on that and then we'll, I mean, I'll be in contact with everybody to let them know.
Good, thank you.
Chief Littleton?
Our February stats are posted to our website.
Our February stats are posted to our website. Uh, we finally got our twenty twenty one. These stats completed, those are also posted to our website. Easter egg hunt is scheduled for Saturday, April sixteenth. At one P M, that's a Sycamore State Park office, or a Sycamore State Park rather, uh, on Providence Road. Uh, with that being said, we're gonna need help stuffing our Easter eggs. Uh, we'll have over ten thousand of those eggs. Uh, we'll do it right here in this building. My plan is tomorrow is to go buy a bunch of candy and we can start stuffing eggs. Uh, Detective Sergeant Waymeyer was able to get one of our rape cases closed out with a conviction. Uh, earlier that last week. Last week, uh, the individual that was convicted, uh, he was gonna be sent, uh, spending thirty five years in prison. And he is not eligible for any type of early release, so. Every day of every second, he's gonna have to stay in there until year thirty five. Our homicide trial was postponed due to the cellmate of Taylor Walter testing positive for COVID. At this time, we don't know when the new date for the trial is, so we're waiting for for that to be rescheduled. I asked as a board pass a a motion or resolution accepting, uh, Janelle Brown, the new hire that. Is sworn in this evening, um, at a rate of fifteen dollars an hour for part-time police officer.
I make that motion to, uh, hire Janelle Brown. Uh, as of three twenty-two at fifteen dollars an hour, part-time.
I'll second that.
Trusty Hartshorn.
Yes.
Trustee mirrors.
Yes.
Trustee music.
Yes.
And then I think Brian has an update, uh, to give as well.
I've been in contact with B C I, um, involving our chief lieutenant in incident back on January sixteenth. Um, they have all their information they need at this point for us. Um, they've submitted all that to the prosecutor's office. They're waiting on some other reports. Once they know more, we will be informed of where they stand on that. Uh, we will then also have set up with the Montgomery County Sheriff's Office to do an internal investigation on our side. To make sure that all of our policies were met and followed, but that will have to follow after we have the information from B C I on their end, get that taken care of, so. We are working on that and we'll keep you guys updated as much as we can.
Great.
Thank you.
That's all the police department has.
And you have this, that keep, uh, hoops sent to.
I do not.
I've already, I already accepted.
I've already responded to.
You send this or did you?
Just print them out.
Oh, thank you very much. Yeah, they contacted us last year about doing that, so yeah.
Thank you, sir.
Chief, you need to help stuffing these Easter eggs.
When?
Yeah.
Uh, as soon as I get the candy here, if I go, if I have time to run and get it tomorrow, then we can start stuffing tomorrow. I'd say no later than let's just say Friday to be on the safe side.
So do we need to get the Christmas stuff?
Yeah, that needs to make its way out to the trailer. I don't know what's in the bags.
I think the couple of the bags are stuffed animals, something with donations.
Well, get those removed out of here.
I just know what Easter egg stuffing time looks like.
Yes.
There will be no open floor space.
Not at all. Um, so for next month's meeting, what we'll have to do is shuffle all the eggs into the kitchen and. After the meeting, shuffle them all back into here.
Honestly, we could probably pull. The back. Four or five seats right back there, because you guys usually get the the big boxes.
Big trash can.
Just put those back there and. Need more room, I mean, we could clear out some space.
Over.
I even took some home the one time.
Did they make it back?
Uh, yes. Mr. Mirs wasn't very happy.
But the one year that we did it, we had it done and.
Oh, yeah.
What was the weekend or?
Help that year.
And and things, so.
Want to get some volunteers on?
Yes.
I got two volunteers for you, well, three actually.
All right, thank you, Chief. Anything else? Okay. Uh, zoning department report.
All right. Uh, we're making lots of progress with the cemetery logs, uh, still working with Caleb on the, um, cemetery documentation. Making spreadsheets, that type of thing, so when we're ready to. Um, actually input for the website will be. Ready to go. Uh, I will be sending out the second quarter trash bills at the end of the month. And Rumpke is sending out the new recycle schedules at the end of the month to each resident in Perry Township. It's, uh, the start date on it is April first. I talked to Rumpke and I asked them if they would please switch it back. To where they will be mailed out in December to start January, and so they're willing to do that, so. You, everybody should get one at the end of the year for next year. We still have a hundred and eighty residences that still have not paid the first quarter trash bill. Um, in zoning, we need a resolution to amend Resolution eleven seventy-two as revised on March eighth. Twenty twenty-two nuisance abatement procedures as provided in section five oh five point eight seven of the Ohio Revised Code. The new resolution. Number is twenty-two oh nine.
Okay, so Karen had talked to me about that and I said we just need to have the resolution written up so we can present it, so we can get that by the next meeting.
If she actually has the resolution, I have it right here. Did you send it to the trustees?
That was the old one.
No, that's a new one, new one.
Okay.
So once the resolutions pass and you guys will be able to sign that. But this is the, it's the nuisance abatement one.
Right.
So we have to wait till the April meeting? Or are you ready?
No, I did.
Well, I'm ready for you guys to vote on this one. I have another one after this.
Gotcha.
So we'll have to, uh, read that. So, Ms. Kaler, could you, uh, read the resolution as proposed?
It's exactly the same as before. So, but we can vote on it if we need.
We'll tell you what, if.
It's it's the same. The only thing that changed was, because it's so long, the only thing that changed was changing the Resolution eleven seventy-two.
Right.
To twenty-two oh nine and the date of today's date.
Resolution what? What was the previous resolution?
Eleven. Eleven seventy-two.
Eleven seventy-two, okay.
So us passed and the only other, the only other changes was made was the current trustees and fiscal officer. That needs to sign, but everything else is the same.
I'll make a motion to amend Resolution eleven seventy-two. As Resolution twenty-two oh nine with the updates to the fiscal officer and the current trustees.
I'll second it.
Trustee music.
Yes.
Trusty Hartshorn.
Yes.
Trustee mirrors.
Yes.
The next thing I have is I was asking if the trustees. Can pass a resolution that the Perry Township trustees can condemn a property after it has gone through the nuisance abatement process. If the building meets the qualifications for. Condemnation based on O R C three seven six seven point four one and O R C five oh five point eight six. Since the Health Department doesn't condemn properties anymore, the Health Department will come out, do an inspection, checklist. Uh, questionnaire to see if it meets the O R C codes. If this is approved or. Something that that we can do, then misroll right up the resolution and it will be voted on at the next meeting.
That's the one that I knew that we did.
Yeah.
Okay.
I knew that that's what it was. No, I'm not reading that.
I volunteered you to write it out because you've gotten so good at it.
I'll be talking with.
I know you will be.
I don't know all those whereas here as they.
I know, me neither.
Just to let everybody know, because Karen and I have done a lot of work on this, this is just not. Us deciding that we're gonna go into a house and condemn it. We have the Health Department come out, we have, who else? Well, basically, the Health Department, they go through and they have a checklist.
Right.
You guys have a copy of that.
The key is, is that the county no longer condemns.
No, they do not.
So now it falls down to the next tier of government, which is at the township.
Right, right.
And we're just accepting that responsibility in a new resolution so that it's official.
Right, but we we just don't, we just don't go in. We do, we do involve the Health Department. We just don't take.
The O R Cs that Ms. Kaler mentioned actually are the Ohio Revised Codes that govern. What is considered a condemned property?
Yes.
So we would be following those.
Right.
Regulations as well.
Right.
On having that in place also will help to dealing with like the Paramount properties as well.
Right.
I think when trustee when was here, she had battled a lot with that, calling the Health Department.
They didn't do it.
Correct.
And then. Ms. Kaler, I may have mentioned that when Ms. Stanford was here, she had said that that property was condemned. And after going through the book, we found it and it was condemned by Montgomery County.
Which no longer does it, so.
Yeah.
And I did ask, um, I talked to Angie Russell, I met with her today with trustees and, um. We, um. Talked about, um, you know, since we found the the. Letter stating that the property is condemned. Is it still in effect? And she says absolutely. So the letter. Was placed on the property along with a sign that says it is a notice of official. I can't even think. Would be on this letter, but anyway, it it, the wording was right off the letter and so it was blown up. And it's on the building now, so my understanding is that. No one is allowed in that building now, especially since that is up there. And if they are, then they can be arrested, so. That's where we are on that.
You know, when you do your resolution, you're gonna have to include that, any trespassers.
Yeah, right, okay.
Because if you don't. Can we major, uh, who was with us today?
Adam.
Yeah, he was with us today and there are signs that the, somebody had posted on there, no trespassing, but.
Probably says properties.
Montgomery County Health Department. Yes, we put those on the front, we put them on the side.
And we did walking the, around the property more. I mean, it's gonna fall down. I mean, that building is going to come down. The brick part looks like it may stay up, but the addition part. It is just really, I mean, it's buckling and, you know, so it's definitely not safe. It's it. I'm surprised the wind hasn't taken it out already, so, but anyway, if we can get. This resolution done, I think it's going to make things move quicker and. We can be more efficient, so. I have a pending permit application for a barn. Out on Brookville Pyramid Road and I will be scheduling two B Z A hearings on April the seventh. One is a placement of a single-family home and the second one is a placement of a shed. That they are wanting to put in front of the house. Um, I have issued one pool barn permit since the last trustee meeting. And just an update on the B Z A, uh, meeting we had last week. Uh, the board has extended a ninety-day. Uh, for, uh, the homeowner to provide more information that was requested by the board. Um, then again, uh, here, I, trustee mirrors and I met with Angie Russell from the Montgomery County Health Department today. Some nuisance properties, she is going to open new cases on another property that we showed her today. And we will be monitoring these very closely. That's all I have.
We are still working on this one that we, that is condemned with the landing.
Yes, because that's because of the EPA is also involved.
Right, and that's, that's the holdup on that one.
Yeah.
All right, trustee reports. For the last month, I've continued updates. Social media and digitizing and documentation for the township. Uh, generalized IT maintenance and upkeep of township systems. Uh, continued weekly driving inspections of township roads, cemeteries and nuisance properties. And I reviewed the draft of the initial mowing numbers, uh, provided by Mr. Hoops. Regarding the township's ability to mow this year. Um, I did provide him some input back. I was able to find the information that I had from the person that had the contract before Mr. Gaiman. Uh, and provided him the updated numbers that I was given for, based on one person doing the work, so that we could get a better. Assessment of what it would cost us. I did some, I heard something a couple of weeks ago and I went back and looked and. I had forgotten about O R C five eleven dot oh one. That basically states the township is to build a new town hall. Improve, enlarge or remove at a greater cost than fifty thousand dollars and the board trustees shall submit the question to the electors of such a township. And shall certify their resolution to the Board of Elections not later than four P M on the nineteenth day before the day of the election. What that means is that if we were to look into moving forward with the new building, whether it's for the police, whether it's for the township, whether it's for township and the police. Um, we would need a yea or nay vote. In the November elections to move forward with that. And that would likely be framed as part of like a thirty-year USDA. Or there's other options out there too, that's just the one that most townships go with, because it's a low fixed rate. Uh, I've been working to collect information on the township. Agreement from Montgomery County Emergency Services. This was. Quite the interesting trip. Uh, backwards through time to find out when this was actually approved because. I didn't remember it and I talked to fiscal officer grill. I don't think it rang any bells with you either. They said we've been paying for it for a long time and are we gonna continue to pay for it? Um, they were able to find the original Perry Township Resolution. Which was oh four dash seven one. Where Perry Township. Agreed to pay Montgomery County Office of Emergency Services. For support for any disaster in Perry Township. And as far as I know, I don't know what the price was here when they accepted it, but I do know that right now. And it hasn't changed in a while from what they said. It's twenty cents per capita is what the township pays. And that's for all municipalities within Montgomery County, cities, villages, townships. So I'd asked. Fiscal grill to write up. A resolution based on the template that was provided by the county. And I will, uh.
Say that was forwarded to all the trustees earlier.
It was forwarded, okay, excellent. So that said, is there any questions on the resolution that was written? Basically, in chief, you're aware of this as well because I I think you brought it up before I even knew what it was and then I got an email saying. Here digitally sign this document agreeing to pay. So basically, if there's any sort of emergency. Uh, event. That the county will help with the management and, uh. Support through those kinds of disasters. And they've, they've gone on to list quite a few things in the resolution. Provide mitigation, preparation, response and recovery support for emergency disasters, enemy attacks or any other action. Too great to be dealt with unassisted as outlined in the Montgomery County Jurisdictional Emergency Management Services Agreement. That's quite broad.
Yeah.
So, um. At this time, I will make, oh, go ahead.
I I assume this, well, it was oh four, we went into this agreement, is that what I understand?
Yes.
So, you know, after nine eleven, I'm sure this is something that came up.
Yeah, and it's been in place ever since.
And, um. So, you say, I guess, for example, the tornado come through, that was something that township could handle, so we didn't get any support from them. Is that what, am I understanding that correctly?
So this covers the residents of the township.
Right.
So I I know that there was emergency support throughout the area.
Okay.
Whether it came from FEMA, whether it came from the county or the state levels, um, we also have people come in from outstate, so.
And this, and this, we did that we've.
Right.
Put towards that goes towards the cost.
So we didn't, we didn't stand up a command center to manage stuff coming in, support going out, people calling in for support services, that was all run through the county.
Okay.
With FEMA. So that's what this is. This basically says that if something bad happens, they're gonna orchestrate. And we're gonna work through them for those support services. That coordination.
And we know, how much does it cost?
Twenty cents per resident, is that what I understood you said?
Twenty cents per capita. So I didn't have an actual number. Because that's what they provide to all of the municipalities that sign up for this. I'm sure we could run that aground.
And this is annual calls for these services will be determined by the Representative Executive Committee and approved by the Montgomery County Board of Commissioners. Is that something they can change at any time or they haven't changed this in years?
They have not changed this at all. So it, it's been at least, they said they don't remember the last time that changed, so.
Then they would have to come back to us and have to do a new resolution.
Right.
I don't remember what he told me the price was over the phone. That's been a while back.
Roughly at six thousand, took twenty cents, six thousand.
Between one, one thousand and fifteen hundred dollars. But as we saw with the tornadoes, you know, it's a kind of insurance that. You pay for in case it happens because we, we saw during that time, there was. The township, the county in this area of the state was just stopped. Everything gave me a halt, so. Is there any questions, comments, concerns with renewing this agreement? Alright, well, at this time, I'll make a motion to accept resolution twenty two thirteen as written.
I'll second that motion.
Trustee music?
Yes.
Trustee Harshorn?
Yes.
Trustee Mares, and I'll print a larger copy for you guys to find.
I've also previously confirmed my attendance at the Dodgers of Revolution Mark Reven, slated for April thirtieth. And that is all I have at this time. Lord, trustee.
Okay, I've met with Chief Littleton on a couple of occasions to talk about the possibility of a police levy. We still have things that were discussed. Have met with Mr. and the concerns about the building and also where he would like to. The building. Had worked with Ms. Kaler, uh, with the Health Department in the land bank regarding the properties in Piermont. And also property on Brookville Piermont and I've attended the BZA meeting. And the last thing I want to say is. It has been brought to my attention that there is a past employee stating that they are not permitted on any township property. Stating that, uh, we have a no trespassing against them. I want to make this clear right now that that is not true. This individual is permitted on any. Township. Property. He can attend funerals, he can attend the meetings, anything. And if anybody has any questions, be more than happy to answer those. And that's all I have.
Thank you very much. Trustee music?
Uh, so I attended, uh. The Montgomery County Engineers Meeting for the Construction of Air Hill Bridge Project. Uh, that project is gonna start on April eighteenth. Uh, should span five weeks with an end date of June first. Uh, the, the signs will go up twenty one days before noting the road closed. Probably have emailed you that, uh, since you have a copy of that, so you knew. They, they noted that the detour, uh, will, will not affect Keener Road at all. Keener Road will remain open. Just past Keener. Uh, the, the detour is gonna go from, uh, Westbrook, I'm sorry, Wolf Creek to Westbrook to Johnsville, Brookville. To go around that. I have, I met with Caleb, uh, on some cemetery lots, uh, that need some attention. Um, I've got pictures of those and names. I want to get with Ms. Kaler on that, uh, to try and contact some next of kin. Um, so that we can get some stuff maybe resolved, uh, with the issues we have there. Uh, one basically just a, uh, foundation port. Uh, and a couple of other things that we're gonna address. I was gonna bring up, I went out to, I, I, I visited all the cemeteries today, the, the three ever sold that we put up signs just to see how they looked. Kind of taking over all the cemeteries. I did notice that there was a considerable amount of debris falling from the archway at Pleasant Hill. Um, which we've already addressed, so. That is, I did also attend the BZA hearing, uh, last week. I think that's all I've got.
Alright, thank you. Uh, old business. Is there any old business on the table? Okay, new business. So I was contacted by, uh, the Preble County Work Experience Program. Basically, they provide, uh, their purpose is to improve the employability of those who cannot find subsidized, unsubsidized employment. Prepare participants for unsubsidized employment. Basically, it's a work program to help people get back into the workforce and, uh, it's kind of like Job Corps, but for people of all adult ages. They had sent me a slide deck which I forwarded to the other trustees. I just wanted to put it out there to see what people thought. We haven't been contacted by Montgomery County for any program like this. But we are close to Preble.
Yes.
So the fact that they reached out, I understood it. They said that some of the work that they do is like landscaping, mowing, trimming, flowerbed weeding. And I know we always have flowerbeds out here that could use a little touch, but we have people that do that as well. The only thing, and I'll just leave this for us to discuss at a later date. I just wanted to see if there was any initial questions on the, the slides that I sent out. Says the. Behavior skills. Then we show up on time, as scheduled, dressed appropriately, act appropriately, communicate effectively. So it's, you know, building, helping people learn how to. Operate in the workforce, so.
What's liability if they would get hurt? And do they use our equipment or do they bring them?
The way it sounded is a lot of the work is, uh. Light tools, like flowerbed work, stuff like that, where it wouldn't be, uh, electric work or engine based.
They covered all of the, uh, workers' comp expenses.
They cut, yeah, they didn't cover all of them. I'm just trying to see if they.
It was on there somewhere.
It was, and of course, it's. Yeah. Opportunities for development of basic work and job skills, improvement and work habits, daily supervision and support. And then I, I think it was in the email that I forwarded. It basically said that it was, uh, you know. Manual labor, that kind of stuff. Um, so we can discuss this further down the road. I want, but I did want to bring it up with the trustees that. This would be something to consider. I think it's a great idea. It just, it depends on the, we would be responsible for a level of supervision. There would be a level of supervision involved. Um, so we'd have to work out that detail, but this is definitely something to consider.
Is there any way a representative could maybe come to a meeting and?
Yeah, so I, she wanted to do that and I said, well, let, let me talk first, kind of introduce it and then we can have her come in at the April meeting.
Yes.
So I will invite her for the April meeting.
Okay.
Great. And the other piece of new business I had was, uh. That the governor had signed House Bill fifty one into law, which was very highly, uh, approved on both sides of the aisle. Regarding the ability to do remote meetings again.
Yes.
They're expecting upturn during the Easter time and they've extended the window. Actually, it was implemented immediately. So from two weeks ago through June thirtieth. I've already accepted meetings with the county and other organizations that are, they're like, we know, no problem. Um, so the township does have that ability. I know we have some work sessions that we've talked about doing regarding the levies and some other stuff. And I think it's good for us to have that in our back pocket, especially with, like I said, spring break last year and the year before. Really dull to blow across the country, so, uh, I was glad to see that the Ohio, uh. Senate representatives went and took this step proactively, so. Is there any comments or concerns with that? Okay, excellent. Anybody else have new business? Okay, uh, visitors. I believe Ms. Huff, you were the only one. Well, we have, uh, Terry here, but she had spoken.
Good evening.
Good evening.
And I heard your land clear, what the rules and regulations of the cemetery are.
I just want to make sure that what happened doesn't happen further.
Well, I hope it never happens again.
Me too.
And I, you know, my real wish is it would go back to the way it was. I, um, visited my daughter's grave. It's a muddy mess. Grass never really grew. You know, other than we, you know, plants and perennials and nice edging we had. So I'm wondering who's responsible for the, you know, I mean, it wasn't just her immediate around. It was. Out from her grave. So who's responsible? Can I plant grass? Put some nice soil in there. I mean, it was not good soil, so.
After the fall passes and everything else, we usually uniformly seed the entire cemeteries.
Well, it needs soil too, because it's just mostly like gravel.
You top that off as well. Anywhere where the, the soil is starting to lose mass. So, and that, and that's part of maintaining the cemeteries, right? Once we have the ability to go in there and. And make sure the dirt is level and good and we seed the areas from boundary to boundary, front to back. Because we want the cemeteries to be presentable. We want it to be someplace where you can go and it's both. Manageable from a township perspective because it's a nonprofit endeavor for us. Um, but we also want to make sure that the people that have family and friends, loved ones buried there. That it's not something that distracts them from their time with their loved ones. So, uh. We are approaching that time of year. It's usually, you weren't here last spring, but usually it's, it's around April. That we go through and we seed and we fill and we make sure that everything's good to go. For the summer months. Once, we're working on our foundation orders now, putting them together to get them dug, whether, once the weather's fit, dig them. Um, once I get this completed, then I will go around and top up with topsoil. Uh, around all of our foundations, around where we remove different things and low spots, somebody bracing ankle. Stuff like that, so I will be putting dirt and putting grass seed down for that. But if you want to put grass seed down, you're more than welcome.
Put anything else low growing, nothing, just grass.
Unfortunately, that has to do with the cost of maintaining. I mean, to, to mow it.
All the cost of maintaining.
It is. So, uh, and I didn't bring this up earlier in my, my report. I, I'll just mention it now. Uh, there is new legislation that allows townships to create a cemetery endowment fund. And so that is something that, that I'm, I'm looking into. I don't have any solid on it yet. And what that will do, it'll create a. A fund going forward that a portion of each grave or donations or whatever else, you know, money's come in for that. That will go for perpetual care of the cemeteries. Right now, I mean, the cost of the cemeteries, you know, of our graves. And some of the, the calls I've made are, are low, uh, in my opinion. Um, I don't want to raise the prices just to raise prices. But to compare with other places. Um, and, and I want to make sure that our cemeteries are something that we can take care, and they are beautiful. Forever, uh, driving through the cemeteries today, uh, you know, you look down the rows and you just. Sumps, um, you know, because the dirt's not great in a lot of places. So it's something we're looking into. Um, and I know we are going to go back in this spring and, and seed. I mean, it's just, it's ugly right now. Grass is yellow. Awful rain runoff. I mean, so.
I, I think it's important to understand that. All the money from any lot that's purchased within a cemetery only goes. To the burial, the man hours, and then the sustainment of the cemetery. So while we could, unless that allows for donations to go into that fund. That would be a good way to go about it.
Well, it'll take, it'll take years.
Percent, but saying a percentage of each grave sold would go in there.
Correct.
It's already been used for that. We don't pull money out of there to do other stuff.
Gain interest for years. Um, and obviously, if, you know, if it's something that could have started fifty years ago, there would, there would be. Plenty of money in there to maintain us perpetually.
I mean, another idea is volunteers. I would have been glad to volunteer.
I'm, like, we've talked about, uh, especially our last work, we, uh, a board of, of folks to come in. That, that's, that hasn't left my mind. It's still there. We're still gonna work on it. I've got to do the research on, on how that's gonna be set up and. What exactly are their roles? Your role, uh, uh, if you so choose to volunteer for that. I would love it.
So when you say volunteer, volunteers do what?
Clean up, whatever. I'm not, not that kind of cleanup. You did, that was. That was a little much. My respective, because my site was beautiful. I mean, you know, if people actually want to do little gardens, I'd be glad to mow.
You know, we can't.
Use a weed or whatever.
You can't do that. And I, and, and I know, I know.
Hire me for a dollar, whatever.
I know you said something and my husband's wife, wife is, is buried there also. So we go there several times and, you know, it's just one of those things. And years ago, he planted a plant and they just whack it off. So we've just, that's what we deal with now and that's. We go and we decorate it and we take the stuff off. So, and. You know, my parents are buried in Lisburg and it's the same way in Lisburg. You cannot put stuff there. They, they remove it, so.
This is all cemetery. I've been doing a lot of research on cemeteries and reading a lot of rules. We're not, we're not different than anyone else. It, it's, and it's unfortunate because it's our dad, right? We want to honor them. And we want their place. We want to go see them. And enjoy it for what it is.
Yeah, and I go visit my parents quite often. I have a bench and I sit on my parents' bench. But, you know, I don't put, I don't put anything there. I don't put wind chimes or anything like that because I know it's gonna be removed, right?
But the, uh, on the other hand too, you know, we have to look down the road because once. All of the, the plots are sold and there's nobody else that's gonna go in there. There's no money coming in to maintain that cemetery. So we do need to. You know, I agree with you that we need to take a look at that.
I, I just. Anybody here in two thousand sixteen or before that, anybody work here? Because. It's so hard for me. My daughter had a connection to this building. And this Perry Township because her husband was a Perry Township policeman. So, I mean. So she cleaned, she cleaned the building. She participated in all the extra. Activities you did. Just, you don't know when they're gonna, can you let me know?
Yeah, I have your number. I'll let you know. We, uh, we're replacing dirt and we're putting grass seed out.
What about when you're taking the, the big archway down?
I can let you know for that, yeah. Yeah, absolutely. I imagine we'll, we'll pick a day, as long as we don't have a funeral on that day. Hopefully, once we pick that day up, I mean, I'll let you know. Don't hold me to that, just in case there is a.
I go by there at least once a week. And it kind of surprised me that was, you know, the archway was still there and I. Really appreciate you trying to save.
Yes, I, I really would like to save that top part. I don't know if I can, but I would like to.
It's really a shame that it wasn't taken better care of.
Yes.
At this point, we're, we're basically, it's, it's, it's a mercy cleanup.
And trust me, I, I met with three professional ma- uh, maesters. And they said whoever did this, they just patched it. They did not do it correctly.
Yeah.
And you see me, and if I can push on it and push my hand clear through it, you know, right there, it's, and this was, yeah.
Yeah, I've noticed the, yeah, deterioration over the years. So, yeah, okay. All right, well, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. At this time, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Trustee Mears? Trustee Hartshorn?
Yes.
Trustee music?
Yes.